Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We are scheduled to have a public hearing this morning on the millage rate to begin at 9:30. We're a couple of minutes late, so thank you all for being here. Right now, I'll open up the public hearing for public comment, and Habitha, do you want to give us a little overview?
This is the third of three public hearings, so this will be the final one with an adoption at 2 o'clock afternoon. I'm going to go through similar presentations that we've done, just in case there's someone here that hasn't seen it. The surrounding millage rates for 2015, 2016, it's not available yet. I've taken these and ordered them from largest to smallest by total and highlighted Pauling, so that you can see where Pauling lines up with surrounding counties. Over the past few years, this gives you a 10-year summary of what's happened with Digest. In 2006, 2007, we were growing up until 2009. Then we saw a reduction in the millage rate as indicated by the red line. The red line is your digest. Your millage rate is in numbers, and then if you multiply the two together, your digest times your millage rate gives you the blue bars, and that shows you what's actually been weighed the other past few years. With, if you don't roll the millage rate back entirely, you have a slight increase. If you do roll the millage rate back, it's level with the 2016, so it's very similar numbers to 2016. The value of a mill is, was at its peak in 2008. It was 12.5 million. Today, it's 3.7 million. If you tax it at the tax rate of 6.188, you'll have 23, 23 million. If you tax it at a rate of 6.5 mils, you'll have 24.5 million total weight.
Go back to 2016, the value of a mill is?
2016 value of a mill, that's this current year that we're in, is 3.3 billion, 773,267 dollars. A slight increase from last year, which it has been improving since 2014. A lot slower than it went down in 2009, 2010.
When we look at this slide, in 2008, you said it peaked, and that's right at 30 million.
That's correct.
Tax revenue brought into the county.
That's correct.
Since that time, we've added 3,661 new houses. Inflation's ran about 3 percent, and I think that's not true. I think true inflation's about 6 percent, but you know, if you go by government, it's 3 percent. And we look at option two, and we look at 2016, the 6.188, at 23 million. That's about 6.5 million less than we brought in in '08.
Correct.
And if we go with option two, 6.5, we're looking at 5.2 million less than tax revenue than we brought in in 2008. Knowing that and understanding that the cost of services has gone up, we have more houses to service, it makes it very difficult for us to actually manually discount it on the same funds we did last year. For most of you who don't know this, we're probably about five years behind Haven Roads because of 2008, this hurt us so bad. We need to get caught up on roads, there's no, not a lot of extra money to do there. We're not talking about a lot of money, but I would still like to see this happen at the 6.5, and I'd like to also see us do a salary study to make sure. We're losing a lot of good people. I think it's 35 firemen, I'll, and to other, I think 15 to other fire departments. We've lost people to Carroll County and to Pope County, and those were because of pay differences. So we need to do a salary study to see where we are. How many instances have we actually done a summary study?
Ninety-nine or more.
Nineteen, nine, nine, so we don't know where we are, really. If we're outlying, or that's something I feel like we really need to do. Now, I feel like as a county, we really need to raise the home state exemption. By raising the home state exemption, one thing Mr. Carmichael did when he was running his campaign, which I kind of liked, he had, he talked a lot about 75.743, I think was the number, that the burden of taxes in this county are on the taxpayer, the homeowner's back. By raising the home state exemption, that's the way you can most quickly change that figure. I would like to propose that we raise it as part of all this, and we go to the legislature and see if they can do that, or they'll prove it for us, and raise it to $4,000. If you're looking at average home, 152,000, and I checked it out with the Office of VOA, that's what it's been since January 1st this year to the end of June, 152,000 dollar average home, we'll be talking about maybe $24 more in taxes at the 6.5. If we do the home state exemption at 4,000, that's an additional $60 that you would get back, or you wouldn't have to pay in taxes. So it would pay for it, and what it would do is take more of that burden, put it on businesses and investors. And we have a lot of investors in Pauling County. Investors are someone who owns homes in neighborhoods, but they rent those homes out. They're really not having to pay any more than a typical homeowner is. But by raising the home state exemption, so they don't qualify for it, so they will pay the higher tax, where the homeowners would pay less tax because of the exemption would be higher for them. Businesses will be the same. It's been said to me, well, if we do that for businesses, is that going to deter business? Well, no. Look at Cobb County, and I think for 2016, 17, it's going to be 6.66. I'm trying to find that out, and I think that's what it is. And if we're at 6.5, we're still lower. Cobb County has a $10,000 home state exemption, we have a $2,000 home state exemption, but that wouldn't apply to the business. They would still pay at the 6.66 in Cobb, where in Pauling, they paid the 6.5, just on the M and O. Okay?
Okay. So this goes to some of what you were explaining. In the digest, you have several different scenarios. Let me go over here. You have a total partial count of 63,691. Of that 63,691, 46,000 of those saw an increase to their digest, I mean to their value, to their value. 23,947 of the 46, their increase was 0.5 percent. So you've got 23,000 more that exceeded that 5 percent, and you have 75,50 that actually saw a reduction in their digest value. So what does that do to your, the value of your home? Or your property tax bill? If you saw a decrease, your value at 150,000 dollars, using that number for last year, went to 141,000, the assessed value is 56.4. At 6.188, you see a reduction from 391.68 to the 349. At 6.5, you still see a reduction at 3.91, I mean 391 dollars to 366 dollars. Of course, and if you saw no change, if it stayed the same, then 6.188 would give you a little bit of a reduction, and 6.5 would be basically the same. If you see an increase, then your house value of 150 went to 159. Value at 6.188 would give you an increase of $2, and 6.5 gives you an increase of about If you saw an increase of 20 percent, which 22,087 did, if you roll the millage rate back to 6.188, there's still going to see an increase, and the 6.5 is going to be a little bit more of an increase. It's going to be $23 more of an increase. So that gives you an example of how property owners were being impacted. Not everybody sees the same difference. We use an average for the digest, on average, your total digest went up 6 percent, but that doesn't mean 6 percent for everybody. Some went down, some went up more than 6 percent. This gives you an estimate of the impact.
So looking at this slide, 45,000 parcels of that 60-something you were talking about, or want to have a tax increase even at the 6.188?
That's correct.
Okay.
You've got 17, almost 18,000 parcels, whether you have the decrease or stay the same. I need one.
So some people think because we rolled back to 6.188, they will get tax increases. They will not get tax increases, but actually, they will.
If their value increased enough, and more than 6 percent, they're still going to see an increase.
Right, over 45,000 parcels.
Well, the 22,087 saw more than, saw 26 and 20 percent.
Correct. That's on the map, but you.
That's on the map.
So we have a tax increase budget.
That's right, that's right. That would continue to help for this county.
Right.
And the back, what are you doing up? Unless you have any other questions?
Back on the, three slides back, you showed it.
One more?
Well, that, I guess, never mind. Go back to the one.
Okay.
So, so we're looking at, when you go back to 2006, up until this discussion, the lowest that we've had is 6.5.
Yes, sir.
And so today, where we made the second budget, we talked about going from what was last year's 6.5 to eight, to, and now the 6.5, which was the lowest.
That's correct.
Okay.
The highest in that time was 8.29 in 2013.
Yes, sir. We saw reductions in the military at that time, which allows you to adjust the, reductions in the digest, which allows you to adjust the military, which is quite the same thing you quite did in previous year.
Which is due to front base, well.
That's right. And they fell a total of about, I think, fell about 40 percent during the time of it, and we haven't gotten back up yet.
Right. Basically, from '09, from '08, when we were at 6.5, say 6.5 in '09, we slightly went up each year, till '13, then 8.29, and then we've kind of started going the other way. 8.22, 7.25, 6.528. Okay.
I'm going to simply cut through the chase. Tabitha, can we continue to operate like this?
Not in, and put back your services, or expand your services.
I think we have Fire Chief Joey Bellbrew that will give us a presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to talk to you and give you some considerations on the millage rate as far as the fire tax goes, and I apologize for not being at the last millage rate hearing that you had, and I wanted to clarify certain things on that millage rate, if I could. Y'all did see, I emailed a letter, I sent out on some things. With the, some of the things that we have to consider with the fire tax is future growth, and we have many different scenarios that we have to put in place over a five-year plan. I hate bringing this dreaded 139 certification, but I have to prepare for that in case it happens. Those are things that's going to cost a lot of funds, and it's going to take a lot of funds to make that happen with the FAA regulations. At the very least, I'll have to hire 21 personnel just to do that. Also, there would have to be a fire station mentioned built on that airport property. And I know Mr. Pownell has been wanting the fire station out on the west end, and a lot of that's been held up due to that, and we do need one out there, and I do have that in the Splot again as well on that. So we're looking at that, we've got a lot of planning we have to do, and like I said, anything can happen, so we have to be prepared for that, and we're expecting to hire, we got more fire stations in the Splot, and we want to hire more firefighters. In order to do that, we have to have the funds to do it, we just can't run off a minimum reserve fund, and that's why the funds are built up. Our personnel have done a fantastic job taking care of the equipment, and we keep costs down to where we can build for our future, and that's what we're trying to do. Like I said, a lot of things can happen. We didn't know if the Splot was going to pass. If the Splot had not passed, and we had to work out fire tax funding, we would have exhausted that pretty quickly when we started buying fire trucks and ladder trucks if we had to. One of the things I believe that was brought up in the meeting was the ladder truck. We do have one in the Splot projected, but we did get one in the Grant as well, and I think it was mentioned, the 110-foot for the Grant. The current ladder we have now, excuse me, the current ladder we have now is in good shape. We get it tested every year by Underwriters Laboratories, UL Laboratories. I think it was mentioned that it had been out of service more than in service, which is not the case. It has been out about eight weeks this year, and that's mainly due to ordering parts, and we have to wait on the parts, hydraulic cylinders that they recommended that we replace. So that truck is still a good truck, it'll still last another couple, three years according to the UL, to get tested every year. So one of the things I wanted you to know is that we do have this in our plans, we are looking at that. There are 100 percent costs that you always have, we know that, when the, we have to save funds for that. One of the things with the ladder truck, we do have to do renovations at Station Two in order to house that truck, and we did not put that in the Splot because we didn't know we were going to get it. So those are things, we may have to use some of the fire tax money for that. It costs a lot of money to put employees on there, you're talking with benefits and all, anywhere from 50 to 60 thousand dollars per person, and with those kind of funds and all the people we want to hire, it's going to eat that budget up over the years, and we watch it fluctuate. I approve all the POs, everybody is very serious about our budget, and I wanted you to know that with the funds building up, I know it seems like a lot of money to people when they see it, and they see that we have a lot of money in the funds, but we do have plans for that, and I did want you to know that. The NFPA requirements, I know that was mentioned as far as needing four personnel on the engine and doing, and we, you know, that's what every fire chief wants to do. Every fire chief wants to hire a lot of personnel, put in the fire station for safety reasons and to serve the public. If we did that now, we'd have to hire over 30 employees, and that's not counting all the new fire stations we're wanting to build. So just, I just wanted you to know that we do have plans for the funds, we have five-year plans, a couple of them, depends on what happens in the future. So if you have any questions about the fire tax, go ahead and ask.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing on the millage rate, and the voters, voters speak. Joe, could you come back up here?
I've just got to wait.
I apologize.
All right.
Several years ago, and I've said it before, the voters voted in the fire tax on 2 mils to 5 mils. Several years ago, the previous board raised the millage on that from 2 to 1 in order to help facilitate and plan, build fire departments as far as staffing is concerned. So there is a plan on that. So that, that board, the previous board, supported that, and I believe, I'm talking to these commissioners here, this board supports it. We understand that where we have some, where it looks like we have some extra money today, may not be the case in a couple of years.
That's correct.
Because there's a plan, and it's being planned out. Not to get into a negative discussion about it, but as far as the 139 is concerned, there's a lot of things that haven't been brought to the full attention of all the staff as far as what's going to be required out there if that was to happen, as far as fire protection, fire department on that facility and so, okay? So a lot of things have been discussed that really don't have the answers to.
That's correct.
You know, over the last three years, since October 3rd, I've dug into it, and I can tell, you and I can tell the public, they don't have the answers to it. We don't have the answers to it. The FAA has not given us those answers, and so we could be planning for something that we don't need. We could be planning for something that we need some, but as of right now, that is not a requirement up there to have that firehouse.
That's correct.
According to the FAA.
That's correct.
And so, and you are correct, and I appreciate you and I've worked together, I appreciate your work. You are correct that I do want to see a firehouse built out on that side of the county for the citizens, because that's what the citizens were promised, and I want to see that over and above anything that's projected, that some people may feel like they might need out there at the airport, because that's not what the Splot was for. And so I just want the public to know that bottom line is, there are no requirements at this time from the FAA about any firehouse.
That's correct.
Stationed out there at that fire, at that airport, none whatsoever, and that may be a discussion for another time, but we'll, we'll see.
I hated to bring it up, but it needs to be brought up.
I know, and I know you hated to, and I hated to call you back up here, but just want to set that clear. But as far as the previous board and this board's supporting the fire tax, we, along with the public, you know, a couple of things came in discussion at the last meeting, but I don't really think those discussions were for a negative light, but I think a lot of good things came out of it. Basically, we're building that up because we're going to be using it in the near future, and I hope we're going to be using it for firehouses on the west side of the county for the citizens.
Yes, we have three fire stations planned, and that will take several employees to build those fire stations. And we are wanting to continue to add firefighters, to have the personnel that we do have shortages when people call in sick or potentially, and I think that's very important for the citizens. Another thing, you know, when you bring that up, we have the crash truck, or the ARV truck, the lime-yellow looking truck that people see sometimes. It's not, I don't buy selling that truck right now just because if we have to replace that truck in the future with market prices, it will be a lot more money to spend. It's a 2010 demo model of the truck. If we sold it, I don't think it'd be a good business practice right now to do that. If, by chance, the 139 doesn't happen, then we can look at selling it then, but I don't think we should do that or entertain that idea at this time until we figure out what's going to happen.
This is a public hearing on the millage rate, if you wish to speak, come to the lecturer. Signing was.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will sign in. Box, same time.
Okay.
Multi-purpose. Speaking of multi-purpose, Todd, why don't we just make a facility that's dual-purpose out there that can support the airport as well as the community at the same time? Save some money instead of building two facilities, you have just a larger facility, think out the box a little bit. I appreciate Mr. Coles bringing up the information on the burden of the homeowners. I think you said 75.74 percent?
75.743.
How high is that compared to the other counties in the state?
It's higher.
It's the highest, it's actually the highest in the state. So I really like the idea of the exemption increase, that's a great idea. I appreciate that. Those numbers also that you brought up about the, was that for this year as well, or was that for 2015?
What number?
That was 3,000, I think, 600 and something homes, new homes?
3,661 homes is from 2008 to June.
To June?
To June, yeah, maybe till May.
Okay, that's great. I just want to clarify the numbers. Are these budgets that you're proposing published?
Yes.
So that we can see those notes online?
That's great.
I'm sorry, I've been out of town, so I've missed all these processes and missed the election, so.
They're still on, right?
I have to reduce the budget, and that budget was reduced on June 1st.
First.
June 1st, so.
Those budgets are out there.
It's called the chairman's budget, it was put out on June 1st. And amended budget came out from, did I do that two weeks ago?
I guess my next question is, we talked about homeowners, but how about business increase? Have you seen any business increases in the last year or two that will help support some of this off the homeowners?
We have, it's 100 percent.
You asked, we can't.
To me, we've got an economic development guy named Robert Reynolds, and I think he's extremely good at his job. He's got responsibility for bringing Google to Douglas County. We now have him in Pauling County. In his presentation, he shows where he brings to Douglas County, a company that brings 100 jobs, and it increases the tax revenue by 1 million dollars. Right down the street, a new subdivision built 300 homes. The services that subdivision requires comes to 1.2 million. So just because you bring jobs, and see, those jobs, yes, some of them come from the county, but you also bring people outside the county, you bring in jobs. If you look at countywide, and I've tried to do this, come up with my own numbers, it's about 60, 40, a company inside Pauling County, about 60 percent of residents live in the county, and you still have about 40 percent approximately live outside the county, who come to the county to work. If you ride by any business and look at the tags out front, you're going to see some Harrelson County, Pope County, Cobb County, Douglas County tags. It's like you went to another county, you're going to see Pauling County tags. So it's never a 100 percent gain.
Right.
So the instance that he gave, when they thought they were going a million up, actually went 200,000 backwards. So here again, that's why I go back to the home state exemption, and why it's so important. If you look at BARTO, I believe their home state exemption is 5,000, or maybe you can correct, Cobb County's is 10,000, Douglas County's is 6,000, Carroll County's is 5.4, and then Pope is 2, Harrelson 2, and Ward 2. What we definitely need to increase ours to at least 4,000, because that does take the burden off of the homeowners, puts some more on businesses, but it still would not drive businesses to come here. I talked to a business owner not long ago, but he's looking at locating in Kennesaw, he's looking at six acres, he's looking at spending 200,000 dollars per acre in Kennesaw. He came to hiring, he's looking at hiring, it's less than 50,000 an acre. So it's a lot of things we have that we can track business, and we need to also look at, trying to take some of this burden off the taxpayers as quickly.
Those 300 homes that you said would cost approximately 1. something million dollars?
Services.
Services. Why would that not, so that burden would be put on builders? There's 300,000, there's 300 homes are making about 30 million dollars profit on.
Well, we are looking at that, we're doing a fee study now. Hopefully, Ann and her group will have some numbers for us in the October, November timeframe, hopefully to offset some of those costs, maybe pay for building inspector permit tech. So, you know, we're probably the lowest in those fees, lowest around the counties, and as mentioned, we're compared to Cobb County, they have more than 20 times of industry than we do, so they really are able to offset their taxes on all residents or community. And as you speak out against the airport, it was said here by one of our commissioners, let's be the best bedroom community we can be in the state. And then as Commissioner Coles pointed out, that's very costly in the number of services versus what you have to prepare for when you have businesses.
May I also suggest that all these developments that failed and have restarted here, that we do a better job of leasing, or builders are doing to those services, the roads and whatnot. I personally live in a community that failed and was rebuilt, and I can tell you, a house in the cost of the county about 10,000 dollars in road repairs, if they left already, but the county is just preparing, but it is a public program.
Mr. Pownell and Mr. Gray served on the committee, and they came up with a fee that's added on to any of those lots to make that infrastructure improvement. So as lots are sold, they are paying for that infrastructure improvement. We realize that we had to fix roads ahead, not behind, or it would be three or four times a month called, so they did build entities inside those, I would say, Pauling, some subdivisions, in order when it came back, they were building.
One more suggestion. I have children in school, I've been in several county facilities, probably spending about 25 percent more on utilities because you're a fall behind on the various efficiency systems that are out there now that a lot of the state will pay for. I personally, I've run large college campuses and whatnot, and easily 20, 25 percent for inefficiencies that you're running right now, so I don't know what your utility bill efficiency systems that are out there now that a lot of the state paid for. I personally, I've run large college campuses and whatnot, and easily twenty, twenty-five percent of inefficiencies that you're running right now, so I don't know what your utility bill are, but I'm sure it's still probably around five to ten million dollars a year. I think two or three million dollars savings would be a, a good investment, return investment in the interest of use about a year, so. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you for your time, Don.
I never stated your name.
My name is Don Whitsun. Appreciate it.
I made sure you signed it.
I did already.
Sign it, Don.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing for the public to speak on the military.
You know, while these, as I was coming up, I wanted to comment too on what Don said about charging the builders. We can do that, but service of the neighborhood is an annual cost that happens every year. We can charge builders more, but that just takes care of one year, doesn't take care of every year after that.
Those costs basically to be, to help out our inspection department at the time of services rendered and type built, but as far as, as far as new families coming in, that's a cost that comes up each and every year. Now, we'd like to clarify one thing. Sometimes you get a compliment and sometimes there's other things that aren't a compliment. We did work hard on, on the roads. It was an issue that came up because of our economy. We had to deal with it here in our county, state, and nation, and that's what, that's what happened. So, I feel like the previous board worked real hard to facilitate that and make sure that we did what we needed to do for the citizens, and I, I think that came out good. I am the commissioner that made up the comment that we needed to be the best bedroom community that we could be. So, let me tell you what else I said during that time. I said that if you focus on pipe dreams, if you focus on doing business with people that you don't know, you focus on doing things with folks that you haven't vetted, and all your efforts on that, I said, we've always been a bedroom community. And what I don't want Polley County to do, no matter who's sitting in these seats in years to come, what I don't want Polley County to do is focus a small group of people focusing on what I consider some pipe dreams that have been unsuccessful, and not focusing on what brought us to the dance. We are a bedroom community, and my point is this, we need to do what we can do to be successful in both, but if we don't stay focused also on making sure that we stay a good quality bedroom community, we're going to all look back twenty years from now, we're going to say, all we cared about was doing this and bringing business and whatever, and look at what we did to our community, and we're not successful. So, there was a little bit more to it than that, and I'm not ashamed of saying that because everybody that I've met moved here to live here. Okay? And I will stand on that. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Morehouse, for those that don't know. I would simply like to address a comment that Mr. Crowe made to me at your November town hall meeting. I am a resident of Posthorn and have been for a long time now, along with all of my family. And during your town hall meeting, we discussed countless infrastructure needs that Polley County has, and I specifically asked how those projects were going to be funded. And I got a bit of the dance of an answer. You've discussed SLOSH and some other various things, and I specifically asked you, was that going to fall back on the property taxpayer? And you said to me, and I quote, "I want you to look at me when I say this, I will not vote to raise them." Now, I understand that it takes money to meet the county function, and if we need a tax increase, then I will support a tax increase, but I think that we're making a very big mistake by turning away business when we need business, by making promises that we're not keeping. I think it's important if we're going to stand for something, to stand for it thoroughly. Now, I have been a resident of Polley County my entire life, and I want to see this be a beautiful place. I want to stay here, I want to raise my family here, I want to create the opportunity here for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a commission meeting that starts at ten, but this public hearing goes to citizens wishing to speak on the military.
Trying to think what I actually want to speak, I want to say one thing too, but I moved to Polley County eighteen years ago, actually working in Squaw, so I knew I was going to have quite a drive. Sometimes it took me an hour and a half to get there, sometimes two hours. It always took me three hours to get home though, I never could figure that out. I thought maybe I was driving up the hill out of it. That was okay with me, because I knew Polley County and what it was and what it had to offer. I knew that Polley County has twenty-five thousand acres, but not at that time, we're doing now, twenty-five thousand acres just in green space. I wasn't looking for Cobb, I was actually living in Cobb, but I moved to Polley County. I could have stayed in Cobb if I wanted Cobb County. So, when I came to Polley, I knew the tax was going to be a little bit higher. But every single afternoon when I came home, every single afternoon, I'd see three or four deer on the way home. Now, since I lived there, fourteen new subdivisions are there, and I don't see those deer anymore. And I understood what I was getting into, and I love Polley County, I love the green space, I love the being able to see those deer and everything that went with that. I'm not saying we need to stay a bedroom community, but in a way, we probably always will be a bedroom community, but we need to do the best job we can, bring the best jobs we can, and keep that balance lower. It needs to be lower now, it's the highest in Georgia now, as we just heard, and that does need to be tweaked, and we need to make it lower. One way to do that is, of course, by the homestead exemption, and I'm still talking about that. The reason I like doing it this year, we can do it next year, but at six point five, things seem to work out pretty good. You start with a low six point five, and it's taking more money out of the budget. The budget we already, as this means Jessica, that we need a lot of infrastructure done, we don't have the money to do it. You know, somewhere, something's got to happen. I wish I could say, you know what, if we can lower your taxes, we'll take care of every service that needs to be done. But that's not reality. Thank you.
You know, at the end of the day, we're going to, hopefully, we're going to vote on and approve all kind of millage rates for school boards, fire tax and so forth. We're going to approve those.
Right.
So that we can send that on to the tax commissioner, and we can all receive our tax bills. We're going to approve the budget, and we'll work on that budget for the next twelve months, work with that budget. We have to tweak it, make some changes, but we'll work together and do that. This discussion that we've done, this is the third public hearing, I think is healthy. I think it's what we should be doing. You know, when we decided to do this, Mr. Klett and I talked to each other quite a bit about it, talked to the other commissioners, talked to Chairman Austin, said we wanted to come up with another budget. It's not just about this year. And everybody can look at the charts, but the charts really say it. Bottom line, the charts say it, when you look at the growth, thirty-six hundred homes since 2008, and I expect the rest of this year and next year to be some, some good times and to have some great families move in this community, but you look at thirty-six hundred new homes, and we're running five and six million dollars behind in our M and O with what we're collecting to provide the same services, and we are five years behind in some of our pavement. Our DOT department does an absolute wonderful job.
Amen.
They do. But we've got some things to address. Nobody wants to have these discussions, but they're needed, they're healthy. And I don't mind at all saying that Mr. Klett and I ask everybody to do it. I know there's a couple of people that maybe aren't going to vote for it, and at the end of the day, don't know where we're going to be, but I will tell you this, the budget that we proposed, proposed, in the millage rate that we proposed, the six point five is a slight rollback from six point five to eight. Six point five is the least amount, the lowest millage rate on M and O that you've had in ten years. Okay? It's the lowest. If we drop below that, we're going to be hurting ourselves. And that, this discussion is really, in my view, is not for this year. It's not just for the one point two million dollar difference that we're going to be getting in, that I feel like we could spend ten times, meaning there's ten different ways it could go. We've looked at it, we looked at the sheriff's department, we looked at DOT, we do need a salary study, we've listened to our employees, we've listened to our department heads, which is what we're supposed to do. We're not going to listen to them, why do we have them? And the bottom line is, you've seen there's seventeen thousand people that are going to get a decrease or stay the same, seventeen thousand almost, eighteen thousand almost. And there's a majority of the rest of them that are going to get an increase, and it's not a big difference between them. But I want you to know, it's really not about this year. It's really not about the one point two million for just this year. And the homestead is something that needs to be done, is something that the previous board talked about years ago, and we need to get off our duffs, and we need to do something about it, send it to our legislators next year, and we need to work on it, and we need to come up with a plan that we can work on that's not just for today, and not just for tomorrow, but for the future. And that's what it's about. I think these conversations are healthy. We do need a salary study, I'll say it again, we do need a salary study. We do have some other things that we need, and for our employees, for our department heads, and for our citizens, we need to work together to do that. I don't want this comment that I'm fixing to make, it's probably going to be taken by some people the wrong way. But we're, when you look at ten years and you look at six point five is the lowest, and you're wanting to go down to a six point one something, it's going to affect us for years to come, and somebody sitting in these seats up here is going to have to do something about it. Somebody sometime, and I don't do anything while I'm sitting here for me. I don't do anything while I'm sitting here for the next election. That's what's wrong with our government today. People govern according to their elections, and we're hired, we're voted in office to do a job all the time, from day one to the last day you're there, to do what you need to do. And so, these discussions are not just for this year, they're for next year and years to come to see that we do what we need to do. We're, we're running on five and six million dollars less, and we got people hollering for services, and we got things that we must do, things that we should do, and some things that we need to do. This year, it's one point two million that we're talking about. We've had to take up the slack for other things, for other people not making commitments and keeping their commitments, and we let that just go by. Four hundred thousand dollars not making bond payments. Four hundred eighty-nine thousand on the last three bond payments on the IPA. August first totaled five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Last year, three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. It's almost a million dollars, and, and we're, we're having, and we need to, for a public hearing in discussing it, about this budget, about a difference of one point two million, that I feel like I wish I could take it and make it so much more so that we could do some things that we need to do for our employees, our department heads, and our citizens. But I, I sit here and I don't get responses from people about paying five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars worth of bond payments, and I have to fight for this right here. Mr. Austin's our chairman until December thirty-first, and we have a new chairman. We need to work together to do what's good for this community. But at the same time, I'm not going to sit back on my hands and not speak up. Y'all have people up here that don't speak up. Maybe I speak up too much.
Sure.
Thank you. Bill Warren. Maybe I do. But I'm compassionate about what I do. And the bottom line, I think, right's right, wrong's wrong. We need to work together, and Mr. Austin's going to be with us for six months, the next three or four, five months with this budget, we're going to have to deal with it next year. And we got some things that this board and the previous board have talked about that we neglected and that we need to move on with, and we need to give our departments what they need, we need to give our sheriff's department what they need, we need to give our community what they deserve, and that's what it's about. So, at the end of the day, whichever budget passes, and whatever the mill rate is, it passes, we will work together to make it as successful as we can, and I just appreciate the opportunity that all four of these other commissioners up here have given us to be able to have these conversations the last four weeks. I appreciate it. More than you guys know, Mr. Davis, thank you. Mr. Crowe, I know you've had a tough time the last four weeks, and I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to discuss this in public. Mr. Austin, I thank you. Smiley. Mr. Klett, and I thank you. Of course, Mrs. Gipper, thanks for just sitting up here and putting up with us. But at the end of the day, we will work together to do what we need to do to be successful. At the end of the day, you've got the T-SLOSH, the legislature, of Reno, and it's helped us more than you'll ever know, I think. You attest to that, Scott, with what you're able to do with roads. Then you've got SLOSH, that's another tax. And then, we're looking at the budget and millage, which could be another tax increase. And then, you've got a request by the sheriff for a new jail, a jail that's probably needed fifteen years ago, and that's another tax increase. So, you, you know, you've heard me say this before, you can put lipstick on the pig, but this is still a tax increase. As the tax increase, it'll be a tax increase burden on the people. And we've got lots, and there's twenty-five to forty-five million dollars that Tabitha and I got in lots. And then, there's needs. What can you live without? What can you do to help us balance the budget? And it's been said that we can't pay our bills. We can pay our bills. I'm leaving this county in the best shape it's ever been in. You've got a double A one ready, it's only triple A that gets higher than this, and I'm leaving this with a forty-five million dollar reserve for a rainy day fund. So, you've never been in better financial shape, and this is going through the worst recession that we ever had in history. These gentlemen did have the hard task of going to department heads and saying, I need a fifteen percent cut, tell me where you can get that. It's, it's awful easy to go to people and say, how can we make your job easier? And what do you need to do your job better? Well, like I told you, twenty-five to forty-five billion dollars is what we have in lots, but needs to run this county, we've got, I put forth a balanced budget, and like Todd said, we will all work together, either budget that is accepted by this board. I just thank smaller government, just for.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You've done a great job, and hats off to you, you have. However, we're still trying to operate the county on a 2008 budget, at five point two million less than we claimed in 2008. If you had a home here in 2008, you were paying the millage rate of six point five, so you'd have paid more taxes in 2008 than you will in 2016 to 17 at six point five. The same six point five percent, you're going to pay less in taxes. Why? Because the backyard house is not where it was in 2008. As commissioners, the number one complaint I get, and I get almost one a week, is when are you going to pay my road? We do not have money to pay off roads. We've got to start moving in the right direction. We've got to start moving in the right direction. I'm smart, you know, the easiest thing for me to do would just be agree and to move on, to say, let's roll it back, and I'll roll it back every year from here on. And when you call and say your road needs paid, I say, sorry, we'll get to it when we can. Like I said, that's not reality. I wish that we could do everything and have the money to do everything. We don't, but we need a plan, we need to start moving in the right direction. I feel like we looked at this situation, we came up with a, we saw a problem, came up with a good plan, but plan, though, has a problem, because it doesn't immediately take effect. It takes time. We got the legislation for the increase and exemption. Then they have to put it on the ballot, and then you decide at that point, do you want a homestead exemption increase, or do you want to keep it where it is? I think I know the answer to that, at least I hope I do. It's tough. I went to work for a company back in 1998, and worked my way up to president of a small broker dealer. And that broker dealer had a couple owners, and I was just the president of the broker dealer, so I ran into these owners. I started looking through the books, and the first thing I noticed, one of the major owners, one of the guys that owned fifty-one percent of the company, was overriding everybody that produced. In some cases, when you put his override on them, it put us five to ten percent in the hole, because we were paying out five or ten percent, and weren't when we were taking in. The hardest thing I had to do was go to him and say, you can't override these folks anymore. And some people are overriding, I would cut you back on, because we as a company have to have thirty percent to survive. I told him that, he didn't like it, he got mad. He said, you can't do that, I signed on it, if you don't like it, you need to fire me. On this instance, I don't have to make the decision by myself, I've got four of the guys up here to make that decision. But it's tough to make tough decisions. But this is moving us in the right direction. We can wait next year and do it. If we wait next year, we might have a real tax increase if we want to do it. Or we can just keep rolling it back, and you just let me know, because I represent you, and you just want to keep rolling it back? And let's do it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on the village? I would declare this public hearing closed, and we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start our ten o'clock meeting at ten twenty. That'll be ten thirty.